In the city, she has been touring City Hall and looking at our facilities. She met briefly with the manager and the city attorney and the clerk. She's with her dad, Mike here. And she brought gifts for you. The recycling perks were from Allie. So she certainly has improved the look of the mayor's office.
She's also generous.
She's brought gifts over here.
If an animal's born in the city today, we'll leave it at that.
Okay, all right. Recycling and gifts?
Thank you, Allie.
I told Allie she might have to cover her ears from down at the council meetings here, but we would get through it. So glad to have you. Mr. Manager?
Yes. Mayor and members of council, we have a, I think, very good agenda for you tonight. Before we start, I would like to introduce to everyone the Employee of the Year. That's a conversation that we had, I guess, last fall about recognizing an employee for outstanding work. So I'm going to just mention a couple of things about our Employee of the Year and then introduce to you a couple of things. I just want to use a few quotes that were provided by folks that worked with her. They would say that she is an inspiration to our employees who will do anything and everything for her. Her specialized programs at the center are usually at capacity after the first couple of hours of registration, which really shows how people enjoy her programs. There are no down days and no room for poor customer service. She makes it a place where people want to work. And I'll let the surprise go now. Kathy demonstrates a commitment to the job like no one I've ever seen. She truly has a love for this profession, and it shows in her everyday work. She leads by example, and her staff follows that lead. So I present to you our first Employee of the Year, Kathy Orlitsky. So Kathy. So she's been with the city for 15 years, and she works as a senior recreation supervisor at the therapeutic recreation center. I've had the opportunity to meet her parents, who believe in public service. And what's great, she's married to one of our finest firefighters, who's been with the city for 20 years. So we have a family package, so it's great to have Kathy as our first Employee of the Year. Thanks, Kathy.
Congratulations, Kathy. Absolutely the best.
Thank you.
Couldn't thank you for better, more deserving person.
I appreciate that so much.
She is the therapeutic recreation department.
And if you will, we just have a couple more quick announcements. We started our Norfolk Emerging Leaders Program this week. As you may recall, you know, last year we had a little over 20 executive interns. Tonight, I'd like to introduce four to you. We have 22 executive interns, which we scaled it down from 200 applications. So I got a little bit selfish in there. Four did work directly in my office, and I'd like to introduce them to you tonight. We have Diamond Clark. We have Norv Farrell. We have George Schaper. And lastly, John Small. And if they followed the lead of the executive interns that we had last year, everyone who graduated and who was looking for a job worked for the city. So I'm high on the group that we have here. We have 18 others that are floating through the city, and it's just a great program, and we've had a good deal of success with them.
Great. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for being a part of it.
The other thing I'd like to mention, that we also have the Emerging Leaders. This is where we have the 16 to 19-year-olds. I think over the last couple of years, councilors have pushed this as much as we can. We have a bigger group this year than last year. We have about 210 individuals as part of that program. And one thing I would like to bring to your attention is, tonight, we actually have Bryce with us. That's Mrs. Bryce.
Oh, hi.
Okay, great. All right. I don't know if you remember Bryce Costello, who actually has, his parents also worked for the city, worked on the anti-bullying document that went, a documentary that went out in a joint effort with Norfolk Public Schools. And Bryce, we learned last week, that film actually won a Telly Award. So it's nice to have someone who started off in the same position as these four individuals, who's been able to help us with anything from anti-bullying campaigns to even the Share the Road campaign. So it's great to have, to see Bryce one year later winning a Telly Award. So thanks for everything you do, Bryce. And then, Mayor, turning back over to you tonight. We have a pretty packed agenda, but our goal is to finish the agenda by 6:30 to allow for a closed session item. We're going to start off with a presentation for a polling place change, and that will be from the Register's office. We have one item that's going to come up on the 25th that Frank would like to talk with you tonight about. And then, starting last year at the council retreat, we talked about financial policies. We had a conversation back in February, and we promised to bring those to you this summer for council action. No action is needed tonight, but we would like to give you the scaled-down version of these financial policies. We'll do an update with shared services, and then Ron will give you a brief presentation on a PPEA proposal that we received, that we're working in conjunction with the school system, but we'd like to bring that to your attention. That's what I have to say.
Okay. Mike, Andy, anything?
I do. I could just run through them as quickly as possible. Got your pen out. First of all, Bernard, I want to know where we are on the fine on the residential section of Hampton Boulevard on speeding. I want to get some from your office. I want a $250 elevated fine in the residential section of Hampton Boulevard. People speak over it. People blow by me. We've got barrels up now, and people are still flying down Hampton Boulevard. We need to put it where it hurts, and it may hit a couple neighbors, but you know what? I'm good with it. So find out if we can do an elevated fine in the residential section, how we can hit them harder, please. I'd like to get some back on that.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay, cool. I just don't want to get away from it.
It's not getting away from us.
Okay.
You asked, we didn't forget it.
Cool.
The items that Jack is having to work around are that you've got a state statutory maximum, which is $250.
All right.
And...
I want an elevated fine.
He's trying to bring it to you.
Okay.
And so you've got that Dillon Rule question that he's working on. And then you also have the prepaid issue, which he's factored into, is trying to work on.
Well, let's get an AG's opinion if we have to. Let's get it done.
The money goes back to how you write the fine, doesn't it? If you write the fine on the state, if you write it on the city, where the money goes.
That's right. If you write it on the state, you have no choice but to obey the state. He is working on it.
All right, let's get it done. I don't care if we do the ordinance or we take it to Richmond and put it part of our package.
He is. He's working on bringing it to you, and when he is able to best deal with the issues that your request is presented, he'll bring it to you, and I will tell him what I liked yesterday.
Well, I mean, I just want to make sure we get it done. I don't care if we give it in a package to Richmond, and it goes up in January, and we talk about it ahead of time, of course, or we do our own ordinance, and we make people that are going to speed on Hampton Boulevard, make them pay. And I'm talking the section of Old Dominion to Terminal Boulevard. People are flying, and I'm over it. And, you know, I purposely go 35. I'm to the point now where I purposely drive 35 in the left-hand lane, and people are flying around. And we need to rein it in.
Chief is rhetorical here.
Chief knows, we've talked, so anyhow, let's just make that happen. If we could, a couple other things. If we could get an update, Marcus, I know the property's sold. I know that we have a note, but I'd like an update, especially in light of Philadelphia and what occurred in Philly on the Leaning Tower on the corner of City Hall and Grammy. Let's get an update if we could in a couple of weeks, see where we are with it, see where the new owners are with it. I don't want to just get away from us because we just transferred ownership. So I'd like an update on the change in ownership. I'd like an update on the note that was done, what the recourse is with the note, what the time is on the note, and see where we are, especially considering what we know to be some weaknesses in that particular property. Also, I've gotten word, and I saw it, that there's going to be a closing at Bowling and Colley. Can we find out how long that's going to be? Because there are new businesses that are coming up on that end of Colley Avenue by the bridge at the YWCA. And it's my understanding there's going to be some closing, some work going on, some good work going on, infrastructure work. But I'd like to know how long it's going to be, how it's going to affect the traffic, because it's going to affect...
Talking about the bridge.
Yes. And if there's going to be closings, we need to know how that's going to affect those businesses that we're talking about, Yu Pi Chow, the new, well, not new, but the vegetable shop that's there. So that's the third thing I'd like to know about. Also, there was, we had talked, we had been briefed about and heard about from George Homewood at planning, or at least he's been involved on local landmark zoning for Talbot Hall. As we know, it's for sale now. I know there's, some movement has occurred on that. If we can get an idea of how that would work for Talbot Hall, local landmark zoning. I know that Frank's here, I haven't talked to him about it, but I'd like to be briefed on it. Either we can all get briefed on it or meet personally within the next week or so, or at least very soon to the next council session. Also, Ron and John Kifler, we had a Mason Creek Summit here. You were out of town. And I will tell you what, you know, it really worked. I think that we've worked Willoughby Summits, and it's been wonderful. We brought all the players to the table in the manager's conference room. And Ron and Kifer, it's almost hard to call John Kifer John. Ron and Kifer did a great job, I've got to say. And I think that we dispelled some myths, and we're moving forward with helping the Mason Creek residents and the flooding that goes on there. They were exasperated on some issues, but I will say that both were professional and handled themselves well. And I think we're going to move forward on that to make things happen in that flooding area. Speaking of flooding, I don't know if you all had seen this. This is Outside Magazine. I don't know if you all saw it or not. I don't know who put it in the magazine, but it is a great national discussion on Norfolk's flooding problem, all in one page. I don't know, Lori or Bob, whoever did it. Lori, what a great job. Have you seen the final product?
She's supposed to send me.
All right, well, I have the final product. It's in Outside Magazine, the final product's right here. And the great thing is, if you're sitting in Congress and you're reading this, it lets you know that we need the money to make this happen. And it really is a great product. It's a great advertisement for us as a city on our flooding problems. And they lay out exactly how much we need. Lori, the information was perfect in it. They really, and Ron, they did a great job for us. So I was really very impressed. You know, I think that's all I got, but I wanted to make, it was like, I think that it was all coming into play the last couple of weeks to get this. And I know I usually have Sabrina to go to, and she lucked out. If you could make those things happen for me, I'd appreciate it. Thanks, Paul.
The landmark zoning, or is what you called it for Talbot Hall, is that a designation for the purposes of tax credits, or is that...
When it came up, it was, and I know, I guess Frank, I'm not going to answer on that. That's something I know that they've talked to you about, or at least they've talked to your office about. It came up in a briefing once, and I said, hey, I want to look at that.
I'm just slowing this down, but I, the owner would have to make the application, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It is in the report from the Hispanic and Architectural Preservation Committee that we'll keep a great team later on this summer.
All right, great. Okay.
Thank you.
But as part of that, can we get what it's zoned in, what they could do if there were no zoning changes? I'd like to know exactly what their rights are, as it sits, without any changes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. And a couple of things that I would brand as quality of life or safety issues. And I've been concerned about high-speed chases for quite some time, and I see the chief as back there, and I knew it would be. But I witnessed one of them two weeks ago. My wife and I were sitting in the backyard, and side of my house is on O'Keefe Street. She looked up, and she said, well, here's a high-speed chase. So we saw a car running through stop signs, all stop signs, right straight through O'Keefe Street. And then we saw three police cars right down behind us. According to the chief, when it was going 37, 34, in succession like that, but it seemed to be faster to me because it was so horrific. And the thing about it is that, number one, this pursuit started in 1300 block on the road. So if you can imagine, Wilder Hall over at Norfolk State. And it ended at Shirley and Granby with a crash. Now, O'Keefe Street is one of the oldest streets in Norfolk, it's extremely narrow. It was a beautiful afternoon, we had children out playing, we had the ice cream man out. And it was just, and this person was being pursued because they said he had been observed going over the speed limit. And it's unacceptable. Anything could have happened. The guy they were chasing could have jumped the curb and killed a child, injured somebody severely. One of our officers could have lost control. Same thing could have happened. I talked to Marcus about it, talked to the chief about it. Lo and behold, this week, we have another pursuit that started in Colonial Place and ended up in, I'll say Huntersville, because a lot of people don't know where Bobbiton is. Bobbiton is, if you say at Golf Street and Church Street, that's Bobbiton, okay? And this person was supposed to have come to a police checkpoint and didn't, you know, didn't stop, had a child in the rear, in the backseat. So we're talking about Colonial Place to Golf and Church Street. And didn't appear to be anybody, you know, in danger, hadn't killed somebody running from the scene, hadn't robbed anybody. And so obviously, chief and Marcus, our officers are not paying attention to either one of you or me. And it's unacceptable to chase people for no, well, they had a reason, but to continue a high-speed pursuit. Now, there's supposed to be some things put in place to handle pursuits, peeling off and all of that.
Only two cars.
Yeah. So, you know, these two are unacceptable. So that just leads me to want to know, number one, who we have out there in the police office? I don't want any names, but I want to know their educational background, I want to do the demographics. I want to know their education. I want to know if we have any veterans of the Gulf War, Iraqi War, Middle Eastern War that could have post-traumatic stress disorders. And we don't know whether they have it, but I'd just like to know, to find out if there's a propensity for it. I want to know if we have any form of Blackwater guys out there, or organizations like Blackwater. I want to know if they're on steroids. Steroids are supposed, if I understand, should be a banned substance. I want to know if we do random testing, and if there are steroids, what type of steroids it could be. When we put a police officer behind the wheel of an automobile, that's a dangerous, if you don't control it, it can be a dangerous event. One of the things that annoys me so much about the state of Virginia is that you have sovereign immunity. Even if one of our police officers had killed somebody, the city would have hid behind sovereign immunity. There was a case in the paper where one of our police officers raped a woman. The city hid behind sovereign immunity, and she'll never receive anything for the most part. And so obviously, if the chief is giving direction, you're not paying attention to him. Marcus, you are Public Safety Director, I believe. Am I right or wrong? Okay? So they're not paying attention to you. And finally, my concerns are obviously falling on deaf ears, and it's unacceptable. It's totally, totally, totally unacceptable. And I'm just not going to sit here and allow it to happen. Secondly, the conditions of our public housing communities and what they look like. Now, certainly, self-esteem has a lot to do with what our students do and how they perform. And the appearance of our public housing communities, Tower of the Park in particular, and it's just, we need to get up on it. Now, they're talking about a possible demolition for the St. Paul Boulevard quadrant. So obviously, we don't want to put any money in there, but we need to put some money in there. Nobody's knocking at the door for the St. Paul Boulevard quadrant, but we need to go in there, curbs, gutters, sidewalks. For young and Calvert, Grandy, and all of our communities, we need to find a public housing, I mean, a way to sweep those streets. Because the appearance is partially, probably 70% because of the residents, but the other 30% is because we're not sweeping the streets. So we need to, we need to realize that the self-esteem that is, that our students, we want them to perform, but if they're coming from a ragtag community, then they already, you know, might feel like they defeated. Okay? So, I mean, we just can't, I represent, now that they've taken, what's that, from you, the last one over there?
Moten Park.
I represent all the public housing communities in Norfolk, okay? And they are our citizens, they are our community, and we need to give them the same thing that we give everybody else. Okay? But this high-speed chase mess, got to stop it, got to nip it in the bud. Got to nip it in the bud. That's it.
What do I do, Nick? Got a few things. This past weekend, I think it's about the first time in about eight years I've missed Hockers Fest. Karen called me, I got to give her a call back. But I had a chance to, I had a chance to go up to the nation's capitol and visit one of my dear friends. But while I was there, we were riding around, and the bike lanes, and I mean, those people that ride bikes in DC, but they're right on already about you getting in, cars driving in the bike lanes. And so I understand what you guys are trying to do now in terms of, you know, create a share the road. Because, I mean, I just saw a lot of that this week here in terms of bikes and vehicles coexisting together. So I commend you for that effort, you know, running your staff. I know that you had personnel that went out to the shopping center convention. I'm very curious and excited to know what they brought back as relates to some of our thoroughfares, particularly Lafayette Boulevard. You know, I hope when they went out there, they went out there with certain corridors in mind, and what we could, what type of commercial retail opportunities would fit into the fabric of our community, and especially looking at some of our traffic counts in our busier intersections. So would be interested in knowing if they were able to bring back potential opportunities for, you know, various areas, especially, like I said, Lafayette Boulevard. I would like a demo schedule. You know, we've taken down, we purchased quite a few properties. I've talked to you, so I want you to give me, you know, a roundabout timeframe for Broad Creek Stationery, but we recently purchased a gray warehouse in areas like that. Just want to know, people have been asking me when some of these blighted properties are coming down. I spoke to a gentleman the other day as relates to Spartan Village, you know, we talked about Andy just alluded to flooding. And I didn't know if there was a person or contact person that folk would speak to. As you all know, that because they, these folk have been underwater every time we've had some major storms, for them to be able to afford flood insurance has become increasingly out of reach for folk who live there. And I know that we're, I sold insurance, so I understand that that's by the government, not the insurance company. They just actually sell it for the government. But I don't know if we have any programs available or what have you for that.
If you give me the names, I can give them the content.
Oh, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. Our city employees drive in city vehicles. They need to be careful. Excuse me, they need to drive the speed limit. Do we have a policy on cell phones when they're in city vehicles? We do? Is it that they can or can't?
Cannot.
Cannot? They don't, they don't not. They do. I see city employees, and the part that really gets me, though, is when I see them in trucks on their cell phone. So they've got one hand on the phone and one hand on the wheel, and, you know, they're, I mean, that's just a recipe for disaster. And in neighborhoods, when, you know, they're not careful and not driving the speed limit in neighborhoods, schools getting ready to be let out, children are going to be playing. And so, you know, whatever we have to do to reemphasize to those people who are driving city vehicles, you know, I'm out showing property all the time, and I see people in city vehicles. I like to see them, but I don't like to see them speeding through neighborhoods and talking on their cell phone and, you know, in a city vehicle. It's not their car. They should treat it like, you know, maybe they borrowed their grandparents' car or something, and, you know, a little bit better. The other thing is the crosswalk markings. I know Mr. Riddick had mentioned this in terms of the markings of the crosswalks, and I kind of started paying attention to it, Mr. Riddick, since she mentioned it. But we're redoing Bliden Library, and, you know, there's a housing apartment, there's an apartment complex right across the street from Bliden, and there are two corners, Mission and Chapel. We need to get marked for pedestrian crossing so that we can make, I mean, I see children darting out in the middle of the street, and I don't know what to do about that. But at least there should be clear markings to make sure that we have, you know, visible crosswalks at both of those corners, especially for the summer. That's all I have.
Two things. I'm now going to bring this up every meeting until it's addressed, but chickens. We talked about it as a council. There was a compromise on, generally on the size of the lot, and ordinance was supposed to be here months ago. And I know the Health Department wrote a letter opposing it, but this council decided to move forward with that. Portsmouth was able to do it in less than two months. And we've been talking about this for over a year and a half now. I'm not happy with the compromise, but it's a start to show that it's something that Norfolk should be considering. We know it's being done anyway in the city. I don't understand why we just can't get the ordinance before council, and if council says no to it, then it doesn't pass. If they say yes, then we move forward with what the recommendations were.
Sure. We're prepared. Okay, well, let's get it in here. I do think the issue was the size of the lot, and that's all, whether it was going to be a quarter acre, a half acre.
Andy and Hartley, I think you guys worked it out. That was your...
A half acre.
Yeah.
I wanted a quarter acre.
All right, well, okay, so we have to bring it back in.
We'll go where we can get to. Let's just get something done. We can shrink it later.
So we'll get chickens in here.
If not, you're going to hear it every, as much as we serve it here, we should.
Should have voted on it one time.
The second thing is...
That was bad.
Yeah, I know it was. The second thing is, about a year and a half ago, I discussed cleaning up our entranceways into our city, that there's various ways to get into our city, and redoing the signage so that it's kind of what Virginia Beach has, which is the wood quality as opposed to the metal sign that has the mermaid on it, whatever we're using as our symbol, life celebrated daily, as opposed to a Hampton Roads community, and sprucing it up with nice landscaping, because, you know, people who come into our city every day, or they're traveling into our city, that allow them the opportunity to see, you know, we welcome you here. And I traveled like Virginia Beach Boulevard and Newtown Road, and when you're coming to our city, we already have an issue there with the retail and the way that it looks. But we could at least do something in the median to make it a little bit more attractive as you're coming in. Same thing on Shore Drive by the airport, as people are coming in, as you're coming in through the Midtown Tunnel, Fourth View, Military Highway, all the, I think we have about seven or eight ways to get into our city from outside. We just need to make it more attractive, particularly now in the summertime, as we're getting tourists and visitors coming in to say, welcome to Norfolk, and, you know, or put up a sign that we have Nautilus, you know, put it down in Ocean View, or you're in Botanical Gardens Zone. More signs that are leading people to Botanical Gardens. I think we haven't done that in a while, where we've updated our signs, you know, telling people where things are. We might have lost some over the years. But we need to, we talked about this... Um, but I, we need to, we talked about this, you know, last meeting, about celebrating all the things that we have here. Well, we, we need to start with celebrating just Norfolk in general, and I think we have to let people know we're proud of our city. Um, you know, we could use the, you know, the same green signs that we have for our neighborhoods, if we can use that same company or whoever's making them to make the "Welcome to Norfolk" signs. Uh, they're much better quality than those metal signs that, you know, it, it's just more inviting. And if, I know it's a budgetary thing, so if I don't bring it up now, um, it might be three years before it's addressed, but maybe there's a way that we can do it in-house if we have the funds to do it or if it's available. But I, I don't know if anybody else agrees with me on that, but I just, particularly at Virginia Beach, when you're coming in that direction, there's some really horrible entrances into our city.
Patrick, 'cause I've been out, the cities on the side, coming into the city is very distinct and it looks nice.
Right. Something that marks us as a city.
That's it. Um, let me double back on a couple of issues that, that Mr. Riddick raised. One of them is about public housing. I think we need to have a discussion in here, um, about, about public housing. Um, and I, it doesn't have to be next week or next, or even next month. But all my issues are with the fact that the federal government is cutting back so dramatically on its role in public housing, whether to go into a Section 8 system or not or, or whatever. But as these budgets continue to get slashed, especially where they're taking money out of is services like for HUD, maybe we need a representative from HUD. Maybe, you know, maybe somebody's gotta come down here and talk to us about what we should be prepared for as far as the future of public housing goes, and then get, try to find out what other cities are doing. I think we have about sixteen hundred units, Paul. You know, I think that's a roughly-
Yeah.
-of, of public housing. And, you know, as the relationship sort of devolves from the federal government, state isn't gonna pick it up, you know, maybe find out what other cities are planning to do. I mean, we're not the only ones with, with public housing, but I know the budgets at HUD are getting, are getting, I mean, especially in this, with the sequester issues, the so-called, you know, I mean, with the funding that is discretionary, so-called, like food stamps. I mean, they're, anyway, that's another whole issue, but they call that discretionary. People are getting it at the end of the meeting. So, uh, I, I think we need to be, you know, to just, we have an honest discussion in here, maybe get somebody from the federal government to come in. I know the housing authority has their role they gotta play, but let's all sit around. I think that's gonna be a very sober conversation about, about this, and so we, we need to get out in front of it.
And the state.
And the state.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the, the second, since Chief Goldsmith has been our police chief, I don't, he's not had an opportunity to talk to us about, uh, high-speed chases. I mean, there's a policy and a process, procedure within the police department, which former chiefs have put in place. Um, I'd like to know from the chief. Um, I mean, Paul has mentioned a couple of high-speed chases. My guess is there are other high, high-speed chases that, that happen, uh, and, but I, Mr. Riddick raises it routinely, and, um, we haven't had a discussion in here in a long time about what the policy is about, about, uh, what the best practices are about high-speed chases. We'll probably do for another one of them, especially with, with Chief Goldsmith. I mean, I understand, I mean, Paul said there were three cars, I think, Paul?
Yeah, three.
In the policy, we just have two. I mean, didn't there, maybe there's some other things, there's supposed to be a senior advisor who calls them off. Do we still have that in place? Did that, there? Anyway, we oughta have that type of conversation for a long time. Okay? All right, that's, go ahead.
So we have a presentation tonight on a, um, a polling place change.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Frank, City Manager, and number two counsel. On behalf of the Norfolk Electoral Board and General Registrar, Elisa Long, who's currently conducting elections today, I'm Stephanie Als, the Deputy Registrar, and we wanted to talk to you about a change to the Campustella Polling Precinct. Something. The Norfolk Electoral Board is recommending the permanent relocation for the Campustella Precinct from Campustella Elementary School to the new South Side Aquatic Center. The South Side Aquatic Center is a newly constructed building. It's got adequate space, amenities, ample parking. It is ADA accessible. It is located point six eight miles from Campustella Elementary School within the current precinct lines. Um, as you see here, the registered voters we currently have in the Campustella Precinct are twenty-two hundred and eight. Of those, twenty-two hundred and eight, twenty-one thirty-five are active, and we had voter turnout for two thousand twelve November at sixteen hundred and four. ADA compliance, of course, has been reviewed with the city's ADA coordinator, and this new building, we feel, will be wonderful for the citizens of Campustella Precinct. This is a rendering of the South Side Aquatic Center that we borrowed from the city's website.
Where's the, uh, slide, Mr. Riddick? Where is? When is it gonna open, three, July?
Twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh of July. River.
And as of course, we have timelines. The Department of Justice requires sixty days notification for review, and we would require mailing to all the citizens in Campustella Precinct that are registered by September in order to let them know in advance for the November twenty thirteen general election. That's it. Is there any questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, members of council, we wanted to breeze you on this morning, or this afternoon, is a request for special exceptions from Seven-Eleven for an ABC off-premise special exception, as well as to be able to open, um, after midnight, which also requires a special exception. This is located on Virginia Beach Boulevard, and the Planning Commission did recommend denial of both of these special exceptions, which is why we're here. The site is at one of the busier locations in the city. Uh, this is Newtown Road, East Virginia Beach Boulevard. It's the Al Shoney site at this area. It is in, uh, the Newtown South neighborhood, but it is in a commercial corridor of that neighborhood, so it is surrounded by other commercial uses. It is designated as commercial in your general plan, and it is zoned for commercial, so both of these uses are allowed in this area provided that special exceptions are approved. This is an image of the site, and what you see with this site is a lot of non-conformities. Uh, one of the biggest ones is access points. They have multiple driveway cuts, some of which are extremely close to the intersection, which is a very dangerous situation. It does not meet our landscaping requirements, the dumpster is not screened, and the sign is non-conforming.
Can they fix all that?
They can. Um, the other thing that you need to be aware of, because this is the issue that, that got the Planning Commission concerned, is the impact of this change in use on trips, on vehicle trips on the roadway. Uh, the current estimate from the Institute of Transportation Engineers is that the Shonys will generate, of this site, will generate a little less than four hundred trips per day, and a Seven-Eleven would generate over five times that number of trips. You've gotta bear in mind that the vast majority of the trips that are associated with the convenience store are passed by. They're not destination trips, it's someone pulling in to pick up something on their way to or from another place. This is, these are not destination trips. So, working with Public Works, um, we did try to address the issues that are associated with the non-conformities. Uh, the biggest one that we had is this driveway that is too close to the intersection of Newtown Road and East Virginia Beach Boulevard, and we were adamant that that driveway had to be closed. Um, property owner was very much opposed to closing it. We indicated we could not support it with that driveway left open. Seven-Eleven has now worked with property owner and they have agreed that that driveway should be closed, uh, which would address the biggest safety issue we have with the site. Uh, they also have indicated they would remove the non-conforming sign, which is too tall under our ordinance, so they would be replacing that with signs that complied with ordinance requirements.
Great.
Uh, they have indicated they will add landscaping, that this property is seriously lacking right now, so every area that you see circled in green, they have identified and have submitted a landscape plan, and they will enclose the dumpster back in the back corner, so they would begin, it would not come into full compliance, we never require full compliance on an existing site, but it would come much closer into compliance with ordinance standards than we have. And then this would also have our standard condition, if it's approved, that they cannot sell any single, uh, serving beer. It would have to be in only six-packs or multiple containers. At the public hearing, there was no opposition. The only proponent we had was the applicant. And so, as a result of this, working with the Public Works Department, staff recommends approval, because they have made all of the changes to the site to address the safety issues and to address, uh, the bulk of the non-conformity issues. We're very comfortable that this could work here. Planning Commission recommended denial on a five-to-two vote. The majority cited the traffic impacts and the potential turning movements, um, and they said that just, that would be continuing to have an unsafe situation here. The minority of the two agreed with us that it is consistent with our general plan, which we said we'd be looking at, and they are making up all of the side improvements that, that we feel it's reasonable to have them make. And so, this will be coming to you in two weeks for action.
Who were the two?
Um, Chandler and-
Brad Low.
Sorry?
Was Brad Low?
No, really.
It was only two for. It was two for.
It was two for.
He'd be on the other side. Yeah, Brad. Who?
Flood.
Miss Flood.
She was for it.
She was, uh, Miss Flood and Miss Chandler both said they have done everything that's reasonable, that which should be approved, and it was the others that voted against it.
Is the whole building gonna be a Seven-Eleven? It's a rather large building.
No, no. Um, it would, the entire building will not be a Seven-Eleven. They, we do have floor plans that are showing the portion that will be a Seven-Eleven. They do not have a use of the other portion.
They have any idea what they wanna do with it?
They have not given us any indication at this point.
Could you go back to the picture?
Sure.
Possibly a cellphone.
This picture.
Yeah, the picture of the exterior.
Andy, possibly a cellphone.
Cellphone company, yeah.
Indeed.
Um, looking at that, that is not a very attractive building. Are we requiring them to-
There is no requirement that they rebuild the building.
How about the exterior?
There is no requirement that they make any modifications to the exterior.
Has their council intimated that they're gonna make that a more attractive gateway to our city, other than what's there?
They're doing some things to it. I looked at the, um, picture of it, and they're doing some things, but it, they're not changing the overall structure of the building.
That parking lot also does not look attractive. Is it gonna be resealed?
Uh, we have no way to require that, but we are requiring is the landscaping to help soften that appearance, particularly in this area.
Frank.
Yes, sir.
Do you refinish?
I'm done.
Okay.
My, their lawyer heard me.
Okay. Uh, now, the length of time, uh, as far as the traffic volume is concerned, somebody going to the restaurant to have a meal, they might be in there maybe for thirty to forty-five minutes.
Easily.
Versus somebody going to a Seven-Eleven from twelve to eighteen minutes.
That's correct.
So that's gonna dras- drastically increase the traffic volume.
That is the reason you have the impact, yes.
Okay. Now, across the street, there used to be a BP gas station. It became, was it CSB or CBS, whatever.
CBS.
CBS, huh? How did that change the dynamics? Because it was probably more people going into the gas station, or was it, did traffic increase there?
The gas station would have significantly more traffic impacts than, than a CBS.
Right.
But it, it's horrible.
Yeah.
It's a bad intersection.
You know, I, I, I don't know what it is that, so that we are, and other, other cities might as well, be attracting so many Seven-Elevens, and businesses are turning into Seven-Elevens. And, uh, I was opposed to the one that went to Granby and Twenty-first Street, and those are right here, the way it looks and the impact it's gonna have, you know, it's gonna be hard for me to embrace this one as well, especially since, I thought they were gonna try to build it down and, and build a Seven-Eleven, but they're just gonna modify the appearance of this.
What are, what are the non-conformities that you're not asking? Um, we're not getting full parking lot landscaping, which would require removal of significant amount of the paving that you have here. The ordinance requires at least ten percent of the interior of the, the parking lot, the landscape. We never require that on an existing building. What we're looking at is, is where can we reasonably get additional landscaping to help soften that impact? So they have proposed, we put additional landscaping at the corner, uh, as well as, as these entrances.
Where's the front, uh, Frank?
The front would be-
On Newtown or on Boulevard?
It will be on Newtown.
How is that going to affect?
I'm sorry, Ray's just advised me it will be on Virginia Beach Boulevard.
That's where the glasses.
How, um, how is that going to affect? Can you show where, go, go up one slide? I think it was. Well, there was a picture. There's a, there's another one with the aerial, like an aerial view. Yes. Okay, so how is access to the Captain D's going to be impacted?
They still will have cross, in, across access to the Captain D's, and that was the issue that property owner has raised, that they have a cross-access agreement. So right now, people are coming in, coming off Newtown, and this median stops well short of the intersection, and so people are turning, and this is what's creating the unsafe traffic movement. People are turning directly in front of traffic coming off Virginia Beach Boulevard, making a right turn off Virginia Beach. People are turning left off of Newtown Road to cut in through this to get to both the Shonys and the Captain D's.
Yes.
This would be closed.
Okay.
That's the safety issue. That, that driveway cut is very unsafe because that turning movement, these cars are constantly turning in front of other cars that are turning, creating a real accident potential.
Absolutely, 'cause I've done that. Um, what is the, um-
Ms. Chandler acknowledged she had done that many times.
Yeah. Um, why is it that the median all the way to the Boulevard? Why does it stop so far short of the Boulevard anyway?
I think because cars turning from that way, we're nipping, they had to pull it out.
This was an issue we had many discussions with Mr. Tyfer.
They pulled it back, 'cause it used to go all the way.
And we don't have any record as to why.
Like, two or three left turn lanes, got it from Virginia Beach, and it, and it, that's an incredible intersection.
It was just, it was out.
It is an huge intersection.
Oh, it was too far, it was too far out for the cars stopping, for the cars turning?
At one time, it went all the way out, 'cause I hit it a couple times turning.
I mean, this, this is where the cars are supposed to be stopping, and it, it ends here.
It was in a bad place.
So it's, it's a bad intersection. There's no doubt about it. The staff recommended approval. We are recommending approval based on the site improvements that are being made that will close the, the driveway access that is creating the bulk of the safety issues.
Frank, I, I'm not the biggest fan of all the Seven-Elevens coming in too, but one of my concerns, and I, I met with the lawyer to look at it and some other issues, um, they presented that, um, and then I talked to a planning commissioner. There was conversation from planning commissioners about the fact that there's so many Seven-Elevens coming in, and that a couple commissioners made comments that they can't support it 'cause they don't want another Seven-Eleven. I wasn't there at the meeting, but I have concerns that if that was the reason why there was a negative vote on that, this is the same lecture I got when I was opposed to check cashing places, that we need to be careful with why we oppose things. There's one re, there's ways to stop things, you know, if they don't wanna do it, but I'm concerned that some of the negative votes had more to do with the fact that Seven-Eleven is trying to really dominate the market, Wawa is threatening them, you know, they, and they, they're, they are converting a lot of stores and they're doing different things, and that it wasn't about the real reason. Um, and if they met the requirements, then why would planning vote against something if they've met everything that, we would do this anywhere else? And, and I understand, you know, if traffic is an issue and there's arguments on both sides, but if it was because they don't want another Seven-Eleven, you can't use that as an argument for voting against it, and they should not be doing that.
The only thing I can tell you is that they have, the Planning Commission has received the same advice from the city attorney's office that you're referring to, that you cannot deny a land use decision based on who the operator will be. And so they were repeatedly advised on this particular case, you have, because they kept saying, "If we want to deny this, what are some legitimate bases we could use?" And traffic is the one they seized on, so all five of the people who voted no gave their stated reason as the impacts of traffic.
But that's not what the comments, some of the comments that were made publicly at that meeting.
I, I can only tell you, I mean, I will acknowledge that, yes, they have, planning commission members have raised concern about the issues you're, you're talking about, the number of Seven-Elevens in the city, um, and the aesthetic appearance of this particular building, neither of which legally could be used. of which legally could be used as the basis for denial.
But basically, they're doing everything that we've asked them to do.
Yes, ma'am.
In order to bring it into conformity.
And I will let you know, we originally recommended denial, because they were refusing to do everything that we had asked them to do.
I know, I met with them when you were recommending denial.
And so, because they...
So I'm happy to see that they're, that they have come on, you know, worked with you guys in terms of coming to some kind of agreement that would, you know, I, yeah, I remember that part, yeah.
They need to fix the exterior of that building.
They're not going to open it, they're not going to take down the Shoney's sign and just put up a 7-Eleven sign, Andy. They are going to do some work to it.
I'm telling you, the exterior of that building is horrible.
The traffic's, by closing that, that access, does that more than compensate for the additional traffic? I mean, which was safer, that, that bad intersection with them going in there and the Captain D's, or the closing that and having 7-Elevens? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Does that offset?
We felt that it did, because the real safety issue that we have here is this, this curb cut right here, which because of its placement, immediately adjacent to where this median is cut, it encourages people to make that left turn in front of traffic.
If by closing that, the traffic-wise, we're better off than leaving things like they are and not closing.
We believe so, yes.
The other thing is, why don't we tell them, why, we can't make them do anything? Why couldn't we suggest that they'll do all that and then upgrade that building so it looks like...
It does look upgraded.
Yeah, there's, I mean, they're not, what I mean is, they're not just going to take down the Shoney's thing and put up a 7-Eleven thing and just keep moving. They are going to do some exterior, they're not going to demolish the buildings.
Tell me about their sign.
Is Shoney's closing, is, so we could...
The particular one is going to be gone, yes.
So we could potentially end up with a vacant, not too, property there.
Wawa would be up there.
Wawa wants three acres, and that's not three acres.
But I will tell you, with traffic volumes here, this is going to be an attractive site. Someone's going to want to come in and do something here.
I'll call myself 7-Eleven and move there, and earn that kind of money.
What would the traffic be if, what would the traffic be if another restaurant moved there that was open eleven o'clock to midnight?
The traffic volumes that we are doing, when we're doing a preliminary analysis for a rezoning are based purely on national averages from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It does not take into consideration the hours they're open, it's looking at the number of seats, the type of restaurant, and it tells me then what is the typical traffic volume, the typical number of trips that we could expect in any given day.
If they put in, if it was a restaurant with the same number of seats as Shoney's?
Roughly four hundred trips.
The sign that's outside, that's not grandfathered, right?
It is grandfathered right now, but we would ask that it be taken down, because of the special exception. They have agreed to that.
They'll take it down and put that up?
That's the sign they were proposing to put up, because that, if you see, would fit directly in.
That sign's not going to allow it.
That sign is...
That was coming down.
It's a lower sign.
Yeah, no, it's a lower sign.
It's a lower sign. It's like they're new, they're putting all those new signs on.
How big will the new sign?
It's going to completely conform to ordinance requirements. I don't remember the dimensions. They have agreed they will do a sign that completely conforms with all ordinance requirements.
If we're going to make it safer, why don't we just ask them to do all the non-conformities? They don't have to, it's obvious.
You can make that request, but it's one of the issues.
That's a horrible corner.
This sign is horrible. I've worked down the street for twenty years.
I mean, that's a horrible gateway. Here we are, you know?
But they're going to lower that sign. They're going to, they're not using the same sign.
I understand, but I'm saying, we're solving the traffic problem. Let them get in full compliance, conforming with our, with what we, I know we can't make, but let them bring it to full conformity with what we would have.
One of the challenges, because we did talk about this with regard to landscaping with Public Works, and that is, there are still plans for doing street improvements in this area, so we did not want to ask them to invest money in that city there.
Well, we don't want to, okay, well, they're going to impact something we're going to do, but other than that...
You could be looking to try to get some additional interior landscaping.
I think if we're going to do it, let's dress it up right.
Mr. King is hearing your comments.
I don't think it's that high of money.
Or is it ease when that up there?
I know the landscaping is...
You don't want the landscaping, right? Oh, I'm going to talk to someone today.
The back of the right-of-way line is right here, and then it is coming up right here. So this is all within the city right-of-way. I mean, one of the other issues we talked about, as you can see, the sidewalk ends right here. We did talk about trying to get the sidewalk extended, but again, because of potential city projects, we said, no, it doesn't make sense to ask them to do something the city may take.
Other than that, let's get it out, you know, we're solving the traffic, let's get it to the corner.
So, I'm sorry, because I did come in late, but the reason planning folks voted against it was because of traffic, and the traffic has been solved?
Well, I can't say it's been solved. What we've said is, they have done as much as they can to address the safety issues, which were originally our concern and why we were...
They have, or they have not?
They have, we've agreed to.
So, so what was the traffic issue then? Just numbers?
It's purely numbers that, if you look at this, roughly four hundred trips per day, as the Shoney's, roughly five times that number would be expected from a convenience store operating twenty-four hours a day.
But you cut that, you basically, to go back to your drawing, you made it where folk will have access to the traffic.
We're pushing the access points to here and here, where it is further away from the intersection, which creates a much safer way of accessing the site. And yes, people would still have the ability to do the cross-access to get to the Captain D's.
What, what's the closest 7-Eleven to the...
Cross the street.
Cross the street. There's one down the street, or up the street.
There's one down the beach, down...
At Whichdaw.
One on Greenwich Road.
So how many blocks we talking, sorry?
There's...
There's one up the street at Whichdaw.
And that's slightly...
At Whichdaw, that used to be the Valley City...
One on Diamond Street.
No, there's one before that by Haynes Furniture, in the little shopping center there. There's one there.
Oh, yeah.
That's not the question. There's one down by Blake Smith.
I reiterate what the mayor is trying to say, you can't look at who is the owner, you're looking at who is used.
So you're telling me I can't talk to you?
No, what we should be doing, Terry, is if they're going to come in, if they're going to come in now, and we've said this before, 7-Eleven has to continue being a good, we need to make sure that they clean up the trash around their buildings, that they, you know...
Well, we're doing a pretty darn good job at that right now.
Alcohol, if that's an issue. I mean, we need to make sure that they're being good citizens, business citizens.
We will convey your desire to see some additional landscaping, to see what we could work with their representatives to get further modifications, to see if we possibly add any more landscaping.
I will say, closing that, the thing that makes it wild, Frank, is when people come from the beach, when they're taking the left-hand turn, and they decide to duck into Shoney's, at the same time, people are turning right, and they don't see each other.
Right.
And then you've got people who are coming up Newtown and turning left. You have three or four people coming at that little driveway at the same time.
You have got...
And I have watched it over, I've worked down the street twenty years at 700 Newtown Road.
But that's been solved, no?
Well, they're going to, they're going to solve it by closing that, and that would be, that would be a huge step forward, I can promise you. That is a disaster. And then you've got everybody who are trying to get into the safety lanes, the, you know, I mean, it's, across the street, it's even worse.
I mean, you have just got so many, it's exactly what your sign is, Mr. Mayor, you've got all these turning movements, all coming together right here, no one's going to see the other person, it's an accident waiting to happen.
And the sign has gone off, maybe the worst sign.
That's a problem. The world looks so bad.
Well, the Shoney's guy is not up there anymore waving at people. There was a little guy waving.
Not permission to people pulling through to go to Perry.
I know.
I'm going to change my name to 7-Eleven. Or I'm going to start representing this. I'm learning a lot in the last three years.
Mayor and council, we'd like to change a little bit from the agenda because of timing and the timing of this particular presentation. A little while back, I mentioned to council that we, the city, had received an unsolicited PPEA for the construction of schools. I've had an opportunity to speak with Dr. King about how the city would receive this unsolicited proposal with a joint effort with the school system. So what Ron will present tonight is basically, what does it mean to have unsolicited PPEA, as well as how we would go about receiving it.
So now that, now that we know what school construction funding we have going forward, particularly for FY14, we are ready to consider what we did receive this spring. As you know, the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act basically gives us an alternative procurement method that can bring private funding and private risk to public projects. We received from S.B. Ballard Construction in March a proposal for school construction, and we will now establish a review process for that. This gives you some sense of the milestones that are related in the PPEA process. Where we are now is that we've received an unsolicited conceptual proposal. There are two phases, conceptual and detail. We will establish a review team for the initial analysis and evaluation, and determine whether or not we want to accept the proposal. And that, that's a, that is not necessarily meaning that you're going to accept it and move forward to construction, that's an accept for a consideration to move forward into the detail phase for potential negotiation.
Hey, Ron, that review team has one council member appointed to it. How is that person selected?
And who is it?
And who is it? According, according to the ordinance that we voted on, that committee has a council member that sits on that committee to review it. If you read the new language, in there it says that there's a council member who sits on that review committee.
At this time, on the, on the initial analysis and evaluation, we have a staff team established for the initial analysis, before the acceptance of the proposal, which...
I don't know what the confusion is, that we didn't intend to involve the council in this sort of level of procurement, so it would come as a surprise to me that we had presented you with that to vote on, but let's get back to you on that one. Procurement is...
I read the document, because I wanted to know what changes we made on, because if you remember, there was some discussion brought up at the council meeting, and there were not a lot of big changes to it, and I wanted to see what, then what were we voting on? And there is a committee, and it says on there that there is a council member who sits on that committee, so, the review committee, and then it does come before...
Sounds like you got to volunteer.
It does come before, no, I don't, I'm sure I'll be the last person picked for that, but I just, I was just wondering, when you said review committee, that's the first thing that...
We will check, and there's, and Bernard, I believe there's two scenarios, there's solicited and unsolicited. The scenario is unsolicited, so we'll, we'll double-check that language.
Can we find the language I was talking about?
Sure. If the review team determines to, that it's an appropriate proposal that we would like the city to consider, then we will, following the ordinance, request competing proposals. And that's when you then move forward to a more formal review of those proposals, and see if any are able, are acceptable to move forward to a detailed phase where you would begin negotiations for establishment of an agreement for construction. This is what we have proposed for the review team, which is a combination of city administration, city attorney, and school administration, executive staff. The next steps are that basically, we will, by the end of July, determine whether or not we will accept this, this proposal, and if we do at that time, then we will advertise with a forty-five-day requirement for competing proposals.
Is that the proposal specific to a number of schools, or the name schools, or is it a general?
The proposal we've received is for a number of schools.
For the M85?
Some, some of that information is in the proprietary part of the proposal.
So when you put it, if you go out for R and P for other proposals...
We will establish a criteria that we want to respond to.
We're not going to have everybody just shoot.
No, no, we will, we will establish the criteria.
Does this involve keeping any portion of, maybe proprietary, may not, keeping any portion of Larchmont National Elementary, or does it involve just raising them totally? Can you say?
I think we can say.
Do you know? Do we require raising them totally?
We, if that's in the proprietary part.
Well, let me ask you, let me, let me ask you this. If, I think that that is a significant issue for some people in council, and we're just, we're just talking, Ron, and I'm not holding, and I think that before you can accept that, I think that that's something that we would have to vet ourselves as to what portions or what can be kept in those schools, if it's an issue, Paul. I mean, it's something we need to talk about, at least.
And it's not just us, the community needs to talk.
Absolutely.
Well, the school board is what is going to make the ultimate decision, so, I mean, we can weigh in on it, but the decision on renovating or destroying is going to be the school.
So the school board, the school board got the, when this first came forth, because this is the second time, the school board said no to it, and then it went away, and then it came back, and now council is, I mean, you, the city manager's office has more control over this now, but the school board is not, is kind of out of it, in a sense, because they're going to be part of the discussion, but really, it's the city that's taking in the unsolicited offer. That was, I think, one of the other changes that might have happened in the, with this language change.
Right. So, and Ron, Miss Step, help me out here. So right now, we didn't ask for this, therefore, it's unsolicited. So we will review, and the team is made up of, we have the two deputies from the school system, as well as their facilities guy, Rex, and their CFO. So those four individuals, with me having Sabrina and Alice Kelly, and also having John Kiefer and Sid Kidman, with Ron chairing this, and we would have someone from the law department also. In this, what's happening right now is just, we're reviewing it. There's information that's not proprietary, that I think we may have already put in your Dropbox, if not, we will. And then there's information that is proprietary. Whatever this group decides, it would, then, from that point, if we decide to move forward, we get to set the parameters of what would occur for anybody submitting anything else. So it's just not wide open. We get to decide how we move forward, if we decide to receive, when it opens into the world.
And that's the detailed phase here.
Yeah, that's the...
It's a true negotiation. Whatever requirements we want to put on the table, that's the opportunity for us to do that.
And before the detailed, this is a very, you correct me, very flexible process.
Yes.
We can, I mean, before you get to the detailed phase, there will be plenty of discussion with the community and with the school system.
Yes.
You know, I mean, this is a true collaboration with the school system, even though this is a little change in the gears, but they will, and I understand that they're fairly comfortable with this. I mean, they, they will basically provide the programmatic element.
Yes.
You know, and we will provide the construction management piece, and, you know, we, you know, we pay the bills when they come in and all that stuff, but it's, we, it's basically, we do the construction management. They say this is what we want. This PPEA, we can throw the whole thing out, we can throw a couple of them out, we can keep them all, we can just, we can decide not to do any of it. This is something which has come to us, which we are permitted to review, study. If we think there are economies, or efficiencies, or time savings that can occur here, we can do it. If we decide maybe we're just going to do two schools this way, or one school, or three schools, we don't, we can decide what's best for our city, and we're not bound by somebody's proposal. And if he wants to respond to how we do it, and other people, you know, what we want, other people can respond. That's what I think it is.
But I do, at some point, want to discuss, if we're putting, I'm going to just pick a hundred billion dollars into something, just basically turning it over and giving it over to the school board when it comes to the construction, I do have issues with that. I want that, I want to be understood on that.
Will we handle the construction?
We'll get it in the structure. We'll be in the strength of the structure.
All right.
We handle it.
All right.
Okay.
Mayor, we wanted to give you and council time for a closed session item. Maybe it's better to go into the closed session now.
Okay. Do you need anything else from us in this, Mark, to just move forward and bring it back to us when you're ready, or?
Yeah, that's it. We plan on assembling the team and at least getting through this initial review during the month of July.
And we can also...
The elected members of council are assembling closed meeting on June 11, 2013 at 6:25 p.m. for the purpose set out in clause three of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, that is, discussion of disposition of intellectual property.
Andy, I think we can even decide if we want more minority involvement. We can do all...
Mr. Riddick?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes. I said, yeah. Hi.
Dr. Ridley? Mr. Williams? Mr. Webb? Hi.